Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Meetings, plural, and Committee of the Whole Meeting. Tonight's first City Council Meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our City Clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burghart?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Coserog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
A full house this evening. We always begin our City Council Meetings with a Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I would like to ask Alderman Burghart and Alderman Cavan to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Our first order of business is to annex St. Charles. Is there a motion? Just the revenue, yeah. Well done. For those of you joining us in the audience and those of you tuning in via our multiple different channels that were on YouTube or wherever, tonight is a, it's always an enjoyable evening to recognize those who have dedicated their time, who have suspended family events, who have rescheduled personal events, who have perhaps canceled vacations, to spend their time either here, in this chamber, or at community meetings, or at other such meetings, because they swore an oath many years ago to serve this community. Tonight, we have the pleasure and the privilege of recognizing outgoing Alderwoman Tara Burghart and, of course, outgoing Alderman Gabe Cavan. We will begin with Ms. Burghart. Ms. Burghart, the floor is yours. If you'd like anything you'd like to share?
I don't know, is my microphone working?
It's on now.
It's on?
We've turned that off, so...
My husband told me try to get through this without losing my tears, so I'll try, I'll try. I told people today, like, I'm not good with transitions, I'm not good with change, but I'm glad to be here tonight and celebrating new members of the council as well, so. I work with words for my career, yet I've really struggled to figure out what I wanted to say tonight. It's just too hard to sum up an eight-year experience in a few sentences, but I'm so very glad I decided to run for the Geneva City Council, and I thank the voters who elected me twice to this seat. It's been such a fun, and challenging, and frustrating, and exciting, and enlightening, and energizing, and dozens of other adjectives, experience. I need to thank my husband, Dan, who encouraged me to run in the first place back in the fall of 2014. I hemmed and hawed and dragged my feet on making a decision. Finally, in December, less than two weeks before the petitions were due, he asked me, "Will you regret it if you don't run?" I said yes, and he replied, "Well, let's do this then." So, thank you, Dan, for always being my biggest supporter and having more confidence in me than I usually do in myself. Thanks, too, to my daughter Hannah. She's grown from a shy kindergartner when I first got sworn in, excited that her mom was serving on the council, to a very busy teenager who doesn't even notice I'm gone most Monday nights, but I hope she's learned something from watching me try something that was so far outside my comfort zone. Thanks to my friends and neighbors who helped me get elected the first time and who were always quick with an encouraging word when I wondered if I was taking the right position. Finally, thanks to my first ward counterpart, Mike Bruno. I sincerely could not have asked for a better alderman to serve with. When I was elected, I'd never been in public office, I'd not served on any city or commission, community board, or commissions. Yet Mike Bruno treated me as a partner from day one. He always had my back, and he took on more than his share of responsibility for constituent services. We've had a lot of fun, Mike, and I'm gonna miss spending time with you. In fact, I'm gonna miss spending time with all of you. I'm gonna be missing spending time here on Monday nights, but I know the city is in great hands, we have wonderful city employees, great leadership at the top, and involved and engaged residents. I'll probably continue to read the packet on Thursday nights, and maybe you'll see me in the audience one of these Mondays. Thank you.
Alderwoman, I'm so glad that you recognized Dan and Hannah. I think all of us on this dais, Hannah, are you gonna be in high school next year?
Yes.
Isn't that something?
She's like shooting tag, and she's like, "Do that!" Her Thin Mint days are long gone.
Do you wanna take the microphone and say something about your mother? Yeah, I don't blame you. Tara, the floor is open, by the way, to the dais, for anyone who would wish to say anything for, about, to, or against.
No, never against.
Mr. Marx?
Tara, it's been, it's been great. You know, we've been on different sides of issues at times, but you always listen to me and I always listen to you. I learned, I never met you before you came on the council, and you do that. You meet a lot of new people, and I do appreciate the time, the effort that you've put into this. I know it's been a lot, and I know you're moving on because you have family and other commitments of work, but you'll be missed by the constituents, by the council, and I believe by the staff also, so I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor.
Thank you, Rich.
Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. So, I really wanted to prepare something, and life got in the way. I'm just gonna say what an inspiration you have been, your dedication, and you're so educated about so many things. You have taught me a ton, and I really appreciate it. Your passion is gonna be missed, you're always asking people, you know, the personal questions, the fun stuff about, you know, share with us about your new business, you know, the good stuff. So, we will definitely miss you, and I know Tara is aware, and this will make you either like her more or not like her. She is a big part of the reason I am here. So, it was, yeah, there was a lot of hand-holding, and, yeah, she's a big part of me being here, too, so thank you for that, and you will definitely be missed.
Thank you.
Mr. Maladra, then Mr. Bruno.
So, Tara, you've mentioned this before, but every time you say it, I'm kind of shocked. The fact that this was outside of your comfort zone was not at all evident to me. You stepped in and you wore the position well from day one, so well, in fact, that you taught me an awful lot, and I've been doing this a little bit longer than you were. One thing that I'll remember forever here and in my professional life is, Craig, you talk in paragraphs and people want sound buttons. So, thank you for that lesson and all of the others.
Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Tara, thank you for those kind words, and you, it has been a pleasure working with you. You're a quick study. You are so much better at some, some things that I'm not, not good at, and I'm, I think we made a good team. The city of Geneva is certainly better for your having been here, and I look forward to extending our relationship past this, past this time on the council. Thank you very much.
Mr. Swanson, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Tara, I've enjoyed working with you for the last six years. It's been a wonderful experience. I've learned a lot from you. The most important thing I've learned, and it's a skill that you have far, you far exceed all of us, and that's making people feel comfortable or diffusing an uncomfortable situation, and that's happened time and time again at this dais, and I think that's been a wonderful attribute, and we'll miss that, and I'll try to do that, but that's not in my comfort zone, so. One thing I do remember, there was one time, years back, I might have been an early, early alderman, and there were five contested ties in one meeting, and I think you and I were on the same side on all five, so I thought that was an interesting time, but it's been a wonderful six years, and I wish you well, and the city of Geneva will miss you.
Anyone else? Floor is open. Mr. Kilburg, sir.
Tara, thank you. Your journalism experience, your education in journalism served you well. You'll be missed. I wanna ditto everything else that's been said, and I think the word I shared with you earlier I admire most about you is your grit. Don't lose it. Thank you.
Tara, we do have a token going-away gift for you. It is Thin Mints. There's a long joke regarding the Thin Mints, so. In case you're curious, folks, in that bag is a, it's a picture of the City Council. We thought she'd like to take that home, and the eyes follow you when you... Thank you for laughing, whoever did that. Alderman Gabe Cavan?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
The floor is mine. I don't have anything near as eloquent as what Tara went ahead and put together. I'm also not concerned about crying, so I guess there's pros and there's cons. First off, I would just like to thank my friends and family for their support over the course of the last four years. There were definitely some very challenging times that we all dealt with over the last four years, so, especially for my family's patience, they probably, they probably got a hard time more than once because of something that we were dealing with here, so I will never forget and appreciate how much you guys put up with. I'm proud of what has been accomplished the past four years at the city level, with a lot of what we've done. I'm happy with how I represented our residents and city, and my approach, and how I believe somebody who's on a city council should approach their responsibilities. I really did enjoy the last four years and this chapter of, in this chapter of my life. I'm a firm believer that everything happens for a reason, though, and I don't know what the next chapter is gonna look like, but I will promise you that I'll figure it out. And lastly, I just wanna wish the best to the council, the residents in our community, our fantastic and great business community. Like I said, this has been a really great experience, and I will definitely see everybody around, so thank you.
Mr. Cavan, both you and Ms. Burghart touched on something that oftentimes people, perhaps who have not had the privilege or the honor of serving in public life, sometimes forget, and that is that your public service is often your family's public sacrifice. It's tough. It's very tough. The floor is open, ladies and gentlemen, for Mr. Cavan. Mr. Maladra, sir.
So, Gabe, I wanna thank you for your service over the last four years. I've appreciated your perspective. As you said, you feel that you've represented your residents well. I think you represented the residents of all of Geneva, not just your ward. I think also you brought a perspective from the business side that sometimes we're lacking up here, and we're richer for that as well, and so through it all, the storms that we had to navigate, your perspective helped, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Mayor?
Gabe, as your co-alderman on the fourth ward, I just wanna thank you for helping me along in some of the constituent issues that we've handled, and your example was helpful, and I know that Jean felt the same way about her work with you, so, for the fourth ward, you've done a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marx?
Well, Gabe, I'll miss our bantering back and forth, you know, those phone calls where we both took a different perspective to try to teach each other a different side of every issue when we did that. You served the city well. You just didn't serve the fourth ward, that is for sure in my mind. You served the city well. You were always out there. You were always trying to get both sides of the story out there and both sides of the issue, always. I think sometimes you took the counterpart just to make sure that that side was taken, and I give you credit for that. You'll be missed. Four years is a short time, and yes, your family probably has had some sacrifices, but it was well worth it for the city. I will tell you that, and I will tell them that the thank you to the family who had to give up those sacrifices so that the city is a better place today, for both families, Tara's and Cavan. I know that that's not easy sometimes, but I wish you the best, and still, I may still banter with you sometimes, so you've gotta read the packet.
Well, I'm not changing my telephone number anytime soon, so you can, you can feel free to go ahead and reach out.
That's an inside joke.
Yes, Ms. Burghart?
Gabe, I so enjoyed getting to know you, I enjoyed serving with you. You always took a very practical perspective that I think was welcome here. Some of us tend to get up high, and I think you always kind of brought us down to what was the real impact on our residents, our businesses, our community, so thank you for your service to the Geneva, and I know you're gonna stay involved in the community, and I hope you do.
Thank you.
We have a token going-away gift as well. It's actually a picture of Tara, and it's a... We got the bags all mixed up. Ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Gabe Cavan. Just so you're aware, City Administrator Dawkins is asking both Gabe and Tara to please turn in your keys.
I already made a duplicate, so I'm happy to turn in the one that I have. It's not a big deal.
Ladies and gentlemen, we continue. Forgive me for losing my spot. Amendments to the Agenda is item number four. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So.
Ms. Burghart makes the motion. Mr. Swan, nope, Ms. Mayor makes the second. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coserog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
They're reminding me of the Little Rascals. With ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved. We jump to item ten, folks, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our City Clerk to read the bills in their aggregate.
Bills for payment total $1,697,975.18.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
The motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in the City Council packet and available on the city's website, has been motioned by Mr. Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Burghart. Any questions or comments regarding the bills to be paid? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coserog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The bills have been approved at the vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent. All items under the Committee of the Whole were under the consent agenda. We jump to item twelve, presentation of ordinances. There are none. Item thirteen, new business, public comment. This is traditionally for anyone joining us in the audience. My suspicion is you're here for the St. Charles annexation vote, so is there any, anyone wish to speak about anything? Yes, sir?
Well, we have quite an audience tonight, as opposed to the last time we were here a month ago. I'm Brian, my wife June, we're in Geneva Township. Last month, we brought the issue of the MIF Industrial Park on the east side of Geneva to your attention. No issues with four of the five buildings. At that time, I had run across the words "pre-settlement oaks." Some of these oak trees are over 300 years old. I thought "pre-settlement oak" was a pretty good name for those. However, we've just recently found another bit of information about them, and it's the term "witness trees." These are considered witness trees in the early 1800s, when the state was being platted out. These trees were used as landmarks, as you'll see my wife's handout, you'll see that. So, not only are these trees very old, they're also very historic, and as we discussed at the last meeting we were at, it would just be a shame. We have, I have no issues with the other four buildings, but building five is on the footprint of these 300-year-old oak trees, and I think it would be a shame, because once again, what's in our city's seal, but a bur oak. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? From the dais, any new business, public statements? This council meeting can be adjourned with a motion. Is there such a motion? Mr. Cavan makes that motion. All in favor of adjourned the council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna take a couple-hour break and be right back. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna convene the City Council Meeting of the new City Council. It is Monday, May 1st, 2023. We are going to begin with the administration of the oath of office. We have a very special guest with us this evening, whom was kind enough to not only accept my call, but to accept the invitation to administer the oath to the men and women who are not only new to the council, but are returning to the council. She is King County's State's Attorney, Ms. Jamie Mossar, and we are delighted that you were here. Welcome. The floor is yours, Madam State's Attorney. We're gonna go in the following order. First ward, Alderwoman, or do you prefer Alderperson?
I prefer Alderperson.
Alderperson, Ayese Bowery?
Got it.
Look at that. Madam State's Attorney, we went through that.
We did.
Floor is yours. You welcome anyone you'd like to join you for the administration of the oath.
Wonderful. Oh, I was gonna say, having watched many of these meetings online, I'm gonna speak into the microphone for anyone watching now or later, I'm gonna invite up my husband, Daniel, my daughter Talia, and my son Jesse to accompany me.
We'll get out of the way back here.
I say your name. I, Ayese Bowery. Having been duly elected to the Office of Alderperson, having been duly elected to the Office of Alderperson in the city of Geneva, county of King, Appleson, do solemnly affirm, and I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Illinois, the Geneva Code of Ordinances, and then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Honor, Alderperson Bowery, we invite you to join us at the dais, and bring all the kids. And Mr. Coserog has a fan base. Look at that.
All ladies.
I know, your daughter was waving to me, by the way.
All right. Sorry.
I say your name.
Aye, right, that's right.
Having been duly elected to the Office of Alderperson in the city of Geneva, county of King, Appleson, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Illinois, the Geneva Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Yep. She, she acted as what's happening on Monday night.
She also hangs out at Cocoa Bean, by the way, Dean, because we saw each other there today.
I say your name.
I, D. Kilburg.
Having been duly elected to the Office of Alderperson in the city of Geneva, county of King, Appleson, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Illinois, the Geneva Code of Ordinances, and then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Not to be super biased, but I'm super excited to call for an ultimate round of appreciation. I was very glad you were not a date. Please raise your right hand. I say your name.
Aye.
Having been duly elected to the Office of Alderperson in the city of Geneva, county of King, Appleson, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Illinois, the Geneva Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. I, D. Kilburg. Having been duly elected to the Office of Alderperson in the city of Geneva, county of King, Appleson, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Illinois, the Geneva Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, we invite you to take your seat at the dais. Madam State's Attorney, thank you so, so much. Ladies and gentlemen, just a brief story. Years ago, we began inviting distinguished representatives of our community to administer the oath of office. We've had judges, state attorneys, and low and behold, forgetting the protocols of working with such distinguished individuals, we tried once to actually present a really nice gift to one of the judges. And I think the response is, oh, God, please, I can't accept that. So our gift to you is, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, you've honored us with your presence. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Sorry I'm trying to do another event.
Got it.
Feel for much better than all my board meetings.
Welcome new council members, welcome returning council members. Madam Clerk, this meeting is called to order. I kindly ask that you take the role. Thank you.
Bruno?
Here.
Bowring?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosrog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house again. I would kindly ask that Alderperson Bowring, and do you prefer Alderperson, Alderwoman? Alderperson Pashki, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Under item three, public hearings, special items and presentations, item 3A is to proclaim May as Mental Health Month in the city of Geneva. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Swanson, seconded by Ms. Mayor. Do we have anybody present tonight from the Mental Health Board? Or anyone wishes to speak to this matter? If not, I will, a voice vote would be sufficient. All those in favor of so proclaiming May as Mental Health Month in the city of Geneva, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Item 3B, consider resolution number 2023-48, mayor's appointment of Alderman Craig Maladra as mayor pro temp. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I believe it was Mayor and Bruno?
Sure.
Mr. Kilburg?
Yes. I just need a clarification, and I checked with legal today in regard to it. By policy, the city council shall elect one of its number to act as mayor pro temp, who during such absence or disability shall possess the power of mayor as is provided by statute. I guess I would like a clarification between appointment, the appointment process and the elective process, where there would be nominations from within the elected aldermen.
The appointment process is the responsibility of the mayor to advance an appointment recommendation for the council's consideration. That has always been the case in the city of Geneva. That has been the case as far as I can remember, that has been the case as far as our city attorney can remember, as our city administrator can remember. We too have checked with legal counsel regarding this matter, and it should be noted that while the mayor pro temp's position is by and far ceremonial, should I become incapacitated? Should I no longer be with you? The mayor pro temp, while he or she may quote "take over," final placement of someone in the mayor's chair is indeed the decision of the city council. The last time we had such discussion, you may recall, sadly, when the incumbent mayor passed away, the city council met in closed session and chose at that time the late Alderman Dakota to serve as mayor throughout the remainder of the term. So, in that regard, there is no election by the council, there is an appointment made by the mayor. The mayor can make that appointment, the council can either approve that appointment or posit arguments as to why that shouldn't happen.
But, and again, I have no issues with Alderman Maladra serving as pro temp. I'm just saying, though, I think the process as outlined by policy is different.
Are you citing section 65 Illinois compiled statutes? 531-3535?
No, I'm citing our own policy as it relates to code 2317.
And what is your position regarding that interpretation?
No, I'm just saying, I think that the appropriate manner would be to nominate and then elect, rather than an appointment brought to the council for approval.
So nominate by whom?
By aldermen within the, within the elected body.
The code states fairly clearly, much like it would be police chief, fire chief, public works director, economic development director, city administrator, assistant city administrator, et cetera, that it's a mayoral appointment.
But, that wasn't the response I received this morning from legal counsel when I asked for a clarification.
Let me, let me ask a question before that continues. Let me just share some history for the ladies and gentlemen tuning in and those in the audience who are obviously keenly interested. In 2009, Alderman Singer served as mayor pro temp. 2010, Alderman Hill. 2011, Maladra. 2012, Vogelsberg. 2013, Marx. 2014, Kilburg. 2015, 2016, there was nobody because those who I approached said, I don't want to do that. 2017, Bruno. 2018, Bruno. 2019, Maladra. 2020, I don't want to do that. 2021 and 22, Maladra. We have, in the past, cycled through. I have, not surprisingly, been advised by those I've approached that, you know what? I don't want that gig. Even though the gig is primarily ceremonial, they don't want that gig. Period. So I believe, and I would affirm tonight for everyone's consideration, that this is the mayor's appointment. If you choose not to support the mayor's appointment, that's certainly a prerogative. But to assume that this appointment is made in any other way but to recognize anyone's service, or their counsel too, all of us, the staff, whomever in the community, that's really all it's about.
I understand that it's mostly ceremonial, and I know that we, we've made a concerted effort to look at areas of gender equality. I mean, we've created a committee as it relates to gender equality in the, in the city of Geneva, as well as other related topics as it relates to equality in Geneva. I'm just saying, I think that this would be, since the makeup of the board or the, of the council itself has expanded, that we have more women that have joined the council. I think that, as you said, it's more ceremonial than anything. I think it would be appropriate that we, we, as a council, we made that overture and, and give it some consideration. And again, I have no issues with Alderman Maladra. I'm just saying, I think that I, I differ with the interpretation of the policy, and I'm just saying, I think that we should give some consideration. And a nomination process would, an election, a nomination process and an election would, would provide for that opportunity.
We have a motion on the floor, or we have a second? Are we prepared to vote? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Epstein.
Marx?
Aye.
With a motion of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention, Alderman Maladra, thank you again for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Your pay has been doubled.
Zero times two is how much.
Your car is now a Chevette. Item C, ladies and gentlemen, mayor's reappointment of city officials. I've read off most of those officials in the previous discourse. I want to say this prior to your consideration. I know of no other professional staff who is as dedicated, as talented, as patient, as intrepid than our professional staff. They take an oath to serve the community, they serve as our counselors, they do not expect unanimity of opinion, but they are charged with presenting the best information possible. And when there is disagreement, they respect that, they understand that, and they continue to work as best they can for the 23,000 people, 1,500 businesses, and nearly half a million guests who visit our community. So with that, I put all their names in nomination, and I kindly ask for your support. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Maladra. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, our distinguished city officials have been reappointed, and we warmly welcome them back to their posts and thank them for their service. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Check this out, folks. Municipal bills, there are none. Bruno, you don't have to worry about them, man.
We didn't run any up in the, in the Times last page.
Just posted on the city's website. Committee of the whole, items of business not available, presentation of ordinances, resolutions, petitions, here we go, folks. Item 12A, consider ordinance number 2023-07, amending Title IV, Chapter II, liquor control, section 4-2-13, adding one Class B 3 liquor license for The James, located at 317 South Third Street. Is there a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Maladra makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. Relatively self-explanatory, it's an application for a Class B 3 liquor license, which is a restaurant with a cocktail lounge. The application has been submitted by JBM Geneva LLC, doing business as The James. The application has been reviewed and is recommended for approval by the city council as presented, and issuance would occur after final inspections. I'm not sure if the applicant's here or not this evening. Yes, and our applicant is here. Ooh, we need to move the podium back for you, but...
Alderman Bruno, thank you for your service.
I had free time.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I, is my microphone on?
It is.
It is, okay. I'm Gretchen Hopkey, and myself, along with my husband Chris, and my brother Todd, and our business management team, Dan Bradley as part of that, are excited to be opening up The James at 317 South Third Street, hoping to open on May 23rd. We are residents here of Geneva, we've lived here the last 13 years, proudly have raised our children here, and could not be any more excited to share our excitement with the community and provide just a wonderful location for many memories to come. So, we look forward to seeing you all on property.
Now, I got a little bit of inside information, because you shared it with me. You and your husband are former middle school teachers.
We are, yes. We both actually met teaching middle school back in 1999, and...
Heck of a transition.
Moving on to bigger and better things.
That's great. Floor is open, Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. So as, as middle school teachers, you will be serving Lunchables?
No, not quite. Much, much better.
Well, the, well, we always like to have people making the investment downtown and like to give an opportunity, if, is there something you'd like to describe about the restaurant, what your...
Yes, no, we're extremely excited. We, well, as you know, it's the former Fiora's location. We love the old historical building, that is the biggest selling point, just an incredible location with that patio. We are extremely excited to have a incredible culinary team that will have a chef-driven menu. We will be open seven days a week, lunch as well as dinner, providing many opportunities to host all of you and your families. Menu will, I would say, chef-driven, ranging from lunchtime sandwiches, salads, fork-and-knife dishes, to dinnertime, which would be steaks, swordfish, salmon, pork chops, but also come and get a burger or a wonderful cocktail.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Well said. Anyone else? We're delighted you're here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, excited to be here.
We have a motion and a second, folks. If there's nothing else, the clerk will take the role.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, the new Class B 3 liquor
license has been awarded to The James. Well done.
Welcome.
Item 3B is to revoke the liquor license. No, excuse me, is that three, is it three?
12.
Good God, 12B, consider resolution number 2023-49, authorizing the purchase of a Ford F-150 Lightning electric vehicle from Bob Riding's Fleet Sales in an amount not to exceed Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Mayor. Ms. Dawkins?
So as stated, the request is to purchase a Ford F-150 Lightning EV vehicle, as contemplated in the fiscal year '24 budget, to replace a vehicle in the fire department. The new vehicle will be equipped with four-wheel drive for inclement weather and will be more functional for the uses, uses of both the fire marshal and the department. This vehicle will be used for carrying equipment to public education events, facilitate building repairs, fire inspection activities, fire code enforcement, permanent inspections, school inspections, fire investigations, and will be the department's backup command vehicle. I would note, the reason that this is coming straight to the city council is, as everything else, inventory is very low, and we were told basically, this is the only vehicle if we want to get one this year. So if you do have any additional questions, we do have Chief Antonori with us, who would be happy to answer any of those for you.
From the dais, Stephanie, you probably can answer that. Is this a vehicle that stays at the fire department, or is it one that goes home, since it's a command vehicle?
It would go home with the fire marshal.
Fire marshal, okay. Do we have to give, do we have to provide any type of charging, since it's an electric vehicle? I mean, is that in the, I guess now, okay...
Chief Antonori, welcome.
Chief, sorry. I thought you would...
And the fire marshal, the fire marshal lives in Kew.
Okay, it's, it's the first electrical vehicle that I thought was kind of, and I just, it's fine, I just want to know if that's in the cost and stuff.
Yeah, the, the project cost is higher than the acquisition of the vehicle.
Yeah.
So part of that would be to provide a charging at the station, and also charging at the fire marshal's home, so that it can be topped off overnight, so...
That's what I was hoping...
And we'll work through that for the first time for the city, because this is the first one.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
I knew it was the first one that I thought was going home, so that's why I wondered.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? Madam Clerk, whenever you're available, please take the role.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, item 12B has been approved by this council. Item 12C is to consider ordinance number 2023-50, granting variation to allow a deck in a street yard and to allow a street yard setback of 17 feet instead of the required 20 feet for the proposed deck at the property located at 101 Woodlawn Street. Is there a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion? Seconded by Ms. Mayor, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so previously, the front of this house was improved with the deck spanning the length of the front facade. The deck was downside, downsized into the existing stoop by the prior owners. The current owners are proposing to reconstruct the deck to once again span the full length of the front facade. The proposed deck does not meet the definition of a porch, which is permitted in a street yard, because the structure does not include a roof or roof-like structure. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April 13th, the commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested variation for a reduced setback without conditions, and with a four-to-one vote, recommended approval of the requested variation for a deck in the street yard, subject to the condition that requires the construction and appearance of the deck to remain substantially consistent with the submitted application. With us this evening, I believe we have the applicant, and then we also have Director DeGroot, Community Development Director.
From the dais, do we need to hear anything else from the director? We have a motion. We have a second. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
All right, Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
With a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, item 12D has been approved. The longest intro, the quickest vote. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you. Item 12E, folks. No, correct, 12D, that should be, read that, 12C was approved. 12D, consider resolution number 2021, 2023, excuse me, -51, granting site plan approval for the construction of a 65,000-square-foot addition to the production facility and a 48,600-square-foot addition to the warehouse and associated site improvements for the property located at 2089 Pillsbury Drive.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kilburg, seconded by Ms. Mayor. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the applicant is seeking site plan approval to expand the existing General Mills facility to help meet growing business demand for food production, packaging, and storage. The expansion includes a one-story 65,600-square-foot addition to the existing production area, a 48,600-square-foot addition to the existing warehouse, and adjacent manufacturing spaces, and an additional 42 space employee parking lot on the north side of the site, and 62 trailer parking spaces located on the south side of the site. At their April 13th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request, subject to conditions including final engineering approval, a revised landscape plan, and approval of an emergency vehicle turning template. We do have the applicant with us this evening, as also Director DeGroot is here to answer any additional questions.
Are there any additional questions from the dais for Director DeGroot? Or the applicant, or are we comfortable with what was consumed by your attentive observations at the Planning and Zoning Commission via Zoom, YouTube, or what have you? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
With a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, it's a gusher. It's been approved, ladies and gentlemen. That's an inside joke as well, so... Thank you, General Mills, very much. And a special thanks to our professional staff, who I know worked with you hand in hand. David, to you and your team, thank you. Kathleen, thank you very much. Item 12E, consider resolution number 2023-52, authorizing the publication of the updated 2023 City of Geneva zoning map. Is there a motion? Mr. Marx makes the motion? Seconded by Mr. Kassarag. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, under state law, the city is required to annually publish updates to the official zoning map reflecting any changes or updates since the previous year's map. The updated zoning map included in the packet incorporates annexations, zoning map amendments, and amendments to planned unit developments that have been formally approved by the City Council since March 2022. Specifically, this update incorporates the annexation and zoning of property located at the northwest corner of Calz Road and Geneva Drive, the approval of the Fox Valley Commerce Center PUD, and amendments to the Valley Animal Hospital PUD. And we still have Director DeGroot in the back, who's willing and able to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the dais for the director? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, the publication of the updated 2023 City of Geneva zoning map has been approved. We're at new business, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone from the audience, any new business comments? From the dais? Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. Two things. First one, hopefully super simple. I, I propose that we all use older person to avoid confusion. Do we need to vote on that? Does anyone object to that?
That's actually the state statute.
It's actually in the statute. I tend to ask preferences, but...
Okay.
So, while in the statute, we can still offer a preferred title, but I have no trouble with that at all.
All right. And then, my next question is possibly for Director DeGroot. I am curious about the Duncan property, the temporary use permit. I know they had to complete certain items to earn the temporary use permit, and the date has passed, and I, I'm just as curious for a status of where things stand.
Sure. Yeah, the, the temporary occupancy permit that we issued, I think it was back in February, expired last Friday, the 28th. There were three conditions on that regarding lighting, landscaping, and then modifications to the Illinois Route 38.
Right.
Right-of-way. We did an inspection Friday morning on the lighting and landscaping, and those items both passed. And we reissued the temporary occupancy permit with the condition that they still have to satisfy their right-of-way improvements along Route 38. They have made progress. Scheduling relocation of some of the utility manholes has taken some time, but they provided documentation to support that.
Okay.
So they're still moving forward.
Okay, great. So they are currently operating under a second temporary use permit?
Correct.
And what's the expiration date on that one?
I think it was another three months.
Three months again. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will bite my tongue. Anyone else? Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mary, Mary, Mayor. Missed my opportunity earlier, but while staff is here, having been reappointed, I just wanted to acknowledge that you all do excellent work, uniformly impressed with everyone, everyone here, and you make our job much easier. So, thanks.
Anyone else in the dais? After dinner, or, excuse me, after dinner, after meeting is on Pashke and Bowring, so any recommendations? A motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Mr. Marx makes that motion. All in favor of adjourning this City Council meeting, please indicate, sorry, sir, by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right, folks. Like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order, please. My name is Craig Maladra. I'm an alderman from the Fifth Ward, which I share responsibility for with Alderman Swanson. Let the record show, all committee members are present. Agenda item number two, motion suspending the rules to permit Councilmember Maladra to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion? Who may, second, have Bruno and Swanson. Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Quietly. Okay, we're good. Item three, approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes from April 17th. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Marx, a second?
Second.
Mayor? Okay, any questions, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Items of business, 4A, consider a draft resolution authorizing the execution of a sales quotation with Tyler Technologies in the estimated amount of $275,000 for conversion to Tyler Payments Platform. Do I have a motion? Mayor? Kassarag? Okay, questions? Oh, sorry.
So, Tyler Technology is the current vendor for the city's enterprise resource planning system, which includes financial, human resources, utility billing, and community development modules. Tyler is discontinuing the use of our current payment processing platform, which is authorized.net by the end of 2023, and has recommended transition to Tyler Payments Platform. This platform is PCI DSS compliant and has additional features to enhance the customer experience when paying bills online. We do have Director Cruz with us this evening. I did want to clarify, I think the $275,000 is the fees associated with people being able to use their credit cards. It's not $275 for us to purchase this platform. So I just wanted to make that clear. So, we are charged a fee whenever we accept a credit card for payment, and we've had that discussion that the council wanted us to, we eat those fees as opposed to pass them on to the consumer, but we limit the, the amount of the transaction. So I just wanted to make that clear. But again, if you have additional questions, Director Cruz is happy to address those for you.
Okay, do we have additional questions?
So, Rita, would you want to expand on the additional features to enhance customers' experience?
Okay. What are some? There are.
Yeah.
There are some.
Some, okay. I mean, $275,000 worth of pay a bill.
True, but that is...
I mean, that's, I know that's not the only thing.
But that is about the parties we pay today for all credit card transactions, because we have so many run through the system, especially in utility billing, especially through COVID. Our numbers shot up dramatically. So the two things that they are offering that we don't have right now would be a pay later feature. So right now, when you go online to pay your utility bill, you're paying it today. You just enter your credit card, run your process, and it's done.
Delayed payment.
And this is a delayed payment, so you can set it up and say, you know, your due date's next Friday. You can set up, go online today, say, okay, I'm gonna pay next Friday, put the dollar amount in, they store it, they process it that day. They can also contact us, like, let's say, you know, you use, let's say, between those, that timeframe, your credit card got compromised, right, and, you know, now it's been shut down. You can call us, and we can actually go back in there and cancel that, cancel that transaction. The other thing, which is, which we do like a lot, because we have a lot of questions about, would be e-check. So a lot of people call, and they say, well, I don't want to use my credit card or debit card, I want an e-check. An e-check is basically the bottom of your check, your routing number, ABA number, you can enter that information in, they'll process a payment that way through an ACH. So there are two new features that they're gonna offer us that we don't have right now.
Have we been, had we been asked for those services, I mean?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's why I talk about, it's gonna be a better customer service experience, because people have been asking all the time for this, because, you know, major credit card companies do that, other utilities do that. We just don't until we have them.
I would also note, I don't know if you heard Rita say, the cost is equivalent to what we're paying now. So it's not an additional $275,000.
Yeah.
So, the software that we're currently using dates back to 2011, and there have been so many changes. Were you finding our, overall, our software was becoming more and more obsolete? And obviously, the support was no longer going to be there, so we really didn't have any alternative.
So it's not that the software is obsolete, it's that we use a third-party vendor to process our payments. Tyler is saying, well, now we're only gonna use Tyler Payments, it's their own homegrown product. They don't want to manage a platform and interchange between Tyler Payments and BridgePay and authorized.net and all these different platforms they have, saying, you don't have a choice, you just have to go with us. Also, too, though, is they did sign up with Chase, which makes them PCI compliant, and most likely, probably lower fees. Because, again, you're not just, you're not just writing transactions for the city of Geneva, they're writing transactions that's on New World and any other type of platform that they have, which they do have. You know, if you go K-12, things like that, they're, they have many other platforms out there, not just what we use here.
What does this do to our insurance costs as it relates to credit card security? Any, any impact at all there? Do we, are we responsible for a breach as far as credit cards, credit card information getting out?
No, this contract actually pushes that, that liability onto Tyler. So they take...
And previously, would have been us. Okay, so that's a big plus. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you, Rita. All right, Kassarag?
Thank you. Is the pay later, is that like a, one of those loan things?
No, 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 no. Schedule later.
Okay.
So you can go online today and say, I want to use my, my fifth, third credit card and pay in 10 days. It's gonna sit out, it's gonna basically run the transaction through, but it's gonna be pending, it's gonna hold the data, and then when the 10 days comes, it's gonna process it. So, we would get the money in the 10th, you would see your credit card hit on the 10th as well. That kind of makes sense?
Yeah, I've never heard of that, I guess.
Oh, yeah, okay. Most, most systems, you can go in and schedule the date that you want the payment to happen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what this would do. Right now, you can only pay on the day that you log in. You cannot schedule a payment. So when we go in right now...
To be charged on?
No, so, yeah.
The due date.
Yeah, but so right now, you can only go in and pay today.
Okay.
With the new system, you would be able to go in and say, I want to pay on my due date.
I just want to make sure it wasn't one of those high-interest loan things. That's all.
I kind of have a feeling, though, I think this, how customers may use it, is they're gonna get the email, say their e-bill is there, and then go online and say, I'm gonna pay it before that due date. So they don't have to think about it, go online, look at the bill, and then later on, go, oh, yeah, I forgot, or, oh, I gotta go back. They can at least look at the bill, schedule, and then sign off.
Got it. Thank you, Rita.
If someone is set up for auto pay every month?
Yes.
Do we have to go back in and reset that up?
Nope.
Or it's all just gonna flow?
It's all gonna flow. This is only, this is only transactions that the customer is going to initiate, not anything that the city is initiating when you sign up for auto debit.
Great. Question I had just left my mind. Oh, is the, is the billing system aware of that due date, or, do you know, or... So will the system have an option, pay on due date, or, or you'd have to type in the date?
You're gonna have to type in the date. It defaults, when you click on the button, it defaults to today, even though you're saying pay later. You'd have to choose that. But on your front screen, when you sign in, the amount that's due, and your bill, your due date's there. So you can easily just go to the payment side and then actually just put in the correct date.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions?
I know that we're gonna lose support at the end of the year. When's the implementation planned? And how are we gonna communicate that?
So, there's a three-month implementation period, but that's really not three months from the city's work. It's more about them setting up their account numbers, doing some of their programming on their end. Romiaville, which is also a New World customer, just went live a bit ago, and they actually, were down only for a day for that conversion period, so I will work with K-Star to make sure that, you know, it is out to the public, that we'll have that time period where we may be down a little bit, make sure it's obviously not by a due date, you know, make sure people can still make their payments, so we'll just kind of, we'll let everyone know and move over. And it won't change your logins either, so, you know, some people say, some people are worried about that. Your logins that you have on e-suite are gonna stay the same.
And there are other disciplines that are involved with this, other than in your department, I mean, like HR? What are some of the things, the benefits that we're gonna be receiving as a result of those other disciplines within the city?
The biggest benefit will be utility billing, because it's all about the online portal. The only thing, from a, from a customer service standpoint and being in the building, is just, we're gonna have new credit card machines. That's pretty much it, just because we have to comply with their software. So a majority of this is all really being pushed online.
Okay.
Which is a majority of transactions.
They refer to base agreement. What, what does that mean, community development base agreement?
So there was an original base agreement that was signed in 2011 or '12, and then, then agreed, then modified and approved with Tyler Technologies. And that, the actual sales quote was back to that agreement when we put New World in 12 years ago.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I think we'll do a roll call on this one, if you don't mind.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
All right, I think we'll do a roll call on this one. If you don't mind.
All right. Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Brings us to item five, public comment, new business. Mr. Cale.
Thank you, Alderman Maladra. I don't know how to refer to you.
Chairman.
Chairman, Maladra. And to our new council people who are here today. I actually have handouts tonight, I have, I came a little bit better prepared than I was last time, not a lot.
If I love to go around, if I could say in school, page two.
So I'll just be brief, I've got my public comment time and my public comment time only so far, so sticking to protocol in three minutes, I'll try not to talk too fast. I did send letters around to everybody last week, earlier this week, I forget about time, I'm not sure exactly what's going on. This is kind of a follow-up to what's happened with carbon capture sequestration, which is going to be a big deal, we're about to own a $2 billion carbon capture sequestration plant, and I'm not sure that we're really aware too much of what the implications of that will be for us in the long time, long term. So that's what I sent around, the letters. This time, nobody likes to read long emails, so I sent it in three, one was just like an introduction to the other two, one of them was a little longer than I wanted, and then a little follow-up. I hadn't heard a lot of feedback on it yet, so I'm suspecting people either aren't interested, or confused, or antagonistic, and I don't know, I don't know which, everyone has different kinds of opinions and times and capacity. But I think it's a really important issue, they're starting to talk about this in Batavia now, so I don't see any reason why our city council shouldn't be hearing about this from, from folks also, just so you're aware of that, it's not a secret anywhere that they do, do talk about a little bit. So there are two carbon capture bills going through Springfield, now there's an industrial bill that's light on regulation, and an environmental bill that's heavier on regulations, I call them the weak and the strong bill. I'm an environmentalist, I heartily support the strong bill, but as a owner of Prairie State, I'm also a, apparently some kind of a capitalist powerhouse, I didn't realize. So when you look at this from that point of view, there's some different things that happen. The big concerns about carbon capture and sequestration really don't apply to us as owners of Prairie State for the most part, because it'll spin it off to a private entity, it'll be their concern. So stuff about whether or not they succeed with capturing carbon is like, not our concern, that's up to them. Really, the big and scariest thing with carbon capture is the utilization of pipelines. Currently, there's only a couple thousand miles in the whole country, the most in the world, but it's about to be up by a factor of 10 at least, spread everywhere, and they have problems when they explode, the stuff kind of soozes out of there like a pond of invisible death, rolls downhill, it can go for over a mile and kill everything in its path, and almost wiped out an entire small town in Satiria, Mississippi, a couple of years ago, prompting the Public, PHMSA, Public Health and Safety Management Association to start writing new rules and regulations for how they build carbon dioxide pipelines. And currently, carbon dioxide pipeline companies are trying to get in under the gun as fast as they can, they don't want to wait the year or so. So that's what these carbon sequestration legislation hopes to get some strong regulation in. In front of that, we'll see what will happen. I would have more prepared, and, but it keeps moving like a fast freight train and shuffling the decks, it wasn't going to happen, it would. We did get the subject matter hearing, we didn't think we would get that, but we have succeeded with that. We have had negotiations happening now, so the industry did not succeed in ramming this down our throat. We were afraid it was going to be a freight train, we would not be able to stop, but we have been able to pursue and stand in front of it so far, we'll see what happens. There are ongoing negotiations, there are only a couple weeks of sessions left. We don't know if a bill will succeed, or what kind of quality it will be, weak, strong, or something in the middle. So I'd want to come here and tell you to be champions of one or the other, but I don't know what it's going to be. It's hard to ask you to stand up for a bill, and you don't know what it is. So, but I do want to say that you should be cheering for the strong bill unless you want to have carbon capture sequestration built at Prairie State. So my letters in there go into much more detail of concern about why that might be a bigger problem than it looks like, even though in the short term, most of the problems won't affect us too bad, and it might make us some money. So the concern is like, well, what's the deal here? If it actually helps sequester some carbon dioxide and we make some money, this should be all a good thing. The concern are the long-term worries, this is where we have a divergence between the folks who operate the coal plant, who have designed and planned the carbon capture sequestration for us on our behalf, and the owners. So we are owners, we are not operators of the Prairie State Coal Plant. Their concerns are different than ours, they would like to see the plant run as hard as possible for as long as possible. As owners, and as people who live on the planet, we'd like to see it run for as little as possible and then be retired as soon as possible. There are parameters and limitations, and contracts, and bonds, and obligations, that, so there are very strict, narrow operating window we can work in. It is scheduled to be closed in 2045, we'd hope at least that can happen, but after we've spent hundreds of billions of dollars in infrastructure for carbon capture sequestration, the idea that Congress might not just say, let's extend those credits, I'm surprised the current House Republicans haven't done that already, maybe they haven't thought about it yet, but that could be a real thing. If that happens, the operators of the Prairie State Management Group might decide to go ahead and extend, or whoever they're working with, it'll be a private organization, they may want to extend it. Something to watch for when the contracts are signed, how firm is the close date or not, if we get to look at the contract before it's signed. Most of these kind of business things, we're not allowed to see, I think they will extend to you permission to see the document. If you sign a non-disclosure agreement, go to their office, look at a hard copy, so you may want to be sure you have two people go and do that, have a very thorough review of whatever's in that contract, and watch for things like that. So the long-term concern for us, if we are stuck with this thing for a long time, in the short term, is we'll lose the opportunity to transition to clean energy sooner, if it should become available. It might happen, there's an article just a week ago about two terabytes of electricity on the queue waiting to get online, almost twice of all the electricity that we use now. So the grid is the backlog right now. That's it. We hadn't had to worry about it too much, because we didn't have that much clean energy, so the grid has been a little taking their time, doing what they're supposed to do, go with reliable, proven technology, it's not in their interest to try things new, and they didn't want to pay for it. But they've kind of changed their mind on that over the last five years or so, so it's starting to happen. So in about 10 years from now, we will either have carbon capture sequestration and be into a coal plant for several decades to come, or be able to take the opportunity to participate in what's literally called a tsunami of clean energy that is coming. So we want to think now, while we can, about what's going to happen to the long term, because it may be wrapped up in these bills that are going to be passed in the next two weeks. The other one, not only losing that opportunity, is what I call the reputation, or the ESG concerns. ESG means environmental sustainable governance concerns, when corporations look to move into a new city, and they might want to ask, well, you got a beautiful river, lovely town and schools, how do I get my 100% clean energy so I can tell all my customers I'm on the green team? And say, well, we're stuck with this coal plant for a couple of decades to go, and that might not be a good place to be in, we might actually start losing business. So when they talk about wanting to have the coal plant so you can maintain business, you have to balance that out in the long term, about, might actually work against you. So where it looks like we may save some money by installing carbon capture sequestration, it's a lot if-ier than it sounds, and in the long term, it's a lot more problematic than it sounds. So I just wanted to make sure I got here and could say something, so I can tell my grandchildren, I found out about it, and I didn't keep it a secret, I went down there and told everybody else. So I wish I had something we could actually do about it here right now, like say, let's pass a resolution, but I understand you'd want to be in favor or against one or the other bills, and I don't have a clear statement on either bills, I just hope you'll be a champion for strong regulations in case any of your local elected officials call you and say, well, you're a municipality, what do you think about this? Are you in a big hurry to have the weak bill, the industry bill, or the strong bill, the environmental bill? And you might want to have to think, do I want to have carbon capture sequestration on Prairie State or not? And then you have to go through all of these different contemplations and decide, do I want to look 10 years from now and say, we're saving some money, but this is costing a lot of damage to the environment, and we're okay with that? Or not? So now will be the time, you get to think about it for the next week or so, and you might be able to throw in your own two cents. If it fails to happen in the next two weeks, today was the first time they started talking about omnibus packages, something might like get rolled in and turned into a big deal, we'll have to keep an eye on that. And also, first time today, I heard the word veto session go by. So they usually try to avoid talking about that, because they want to get things done. Now, as soon as you say veto, it's like, off the table, and it's not going to happen.